Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, October 19th, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. First item up tonight is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. I do not have anyone signed up to deliver an invocation this evening, and I would like to ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to come up and say a few words over this proceedings tonight. If not, I'll open it up to Mr. Beaumont, who seems to be our default guy for giving us good guidance.
May we the Commissioners' chaplain?
Yes, thank you.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this glorious day, Lord, thank you for this wonderful place that we get to live in and call home, and that is great. Father, our prayers go out to Kitty and her family, Lord, and especially Fred, ask him quickly what he's going through right now. Father, may you give us more wisdom tonight, may you help staff present their evidence clearly and succinctly, or give us wisdom to understand what the issues are, Father, and with your best, it's our prayer, Father. We're blessed this evening, bless our country, especially as we get through this national election cycle, Father, I pray that your will would be done where we got this in this season.
Hang on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. We do have a couple things that need to be changed on the agenda tonight before we move into approval. I'm going to make a motion to amend item A under public hearings and move that to November 16th. That will be the Currituck Water and Sewer LLC wastewater treatment agenda item. The applicant has requested us to move that back one month.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other changes, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Up next is public comment. I'll remind everyone that comes up this evening and has signed up that, we don't have anybody signed up this evening. Is anybody who'd like to speak to public comment that didn't sign the sheet tonight? All right, seeing none coming forward, I will close public comment, move on to Commissioner Reports. This evening, Commissioner Etheridge, Mary Etheridge, is not here. She's at home with her husband, who's recuperating from a minor surgery, and so we wish him the best, and so speedy recovery to her husband. I was not here at the last meeting, and I was out of town. I just want to, for the folks at Eagle Creek, if there's any in here or watching tonight, I got your emails, and I got enough voicemails on my voicemail system that actually crashed my voicemail system, so I still haven't retrieved those. I'm working with tech support to get those back, so I wasn't avoiding you. I was out of town on vacation, and my apologies if I wasn't able to respond to you through voicemail. I did respond to emails, however. The only thing I had this evening is, I got asked today about Halloween and trick-or-treat, and under COVID, what does that look like? Well, the county doesn't have anything to do with trick-or-treat, really, and other than not allowing it to take place. And Corolla, for instance, at the park, in the past, we let that happen at the park, and did trunk-or-treat over there. This year, we will not be doing trunk-or-treat at the park, so as far as that goes, if you're in a regular neighborhood and you want to take the kitties out and get them dressed up, go for it. If you don't, that's your choice. So I just wanted to answer that question, since I got that question today from an individual. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mike Payman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to give another update on the Currituck County's COVID status. As of today, the lab-confirmed cases are 216. The current active cases in Currituck County is 33, and 179 have recovered, and the county has four deaths. So that is as of today, and other than that, we're just getting ready to get into the winter season. You're going to be starting your fireplaces up. Just remember, the fire department gets a lot of calls for chimney fires, so try to have your chimneys inspected if you can, and if, again, if you can help out with any volunteers, please jump in. I'm sure they'd like to have your support. That's it for tonight.
Thank you. I'm going to mess Paul up here tonight and call Ms. Selena Jarvis next, and rotator to the left.
Okay. On October 13th, I attended the COA Board of Trustees meeting, and we got a great report from the Student Government Association's Executive Board. I was really impressed with their E-Board, as they call it. Their presentation and their poise in front of such a large group of adults was impressive. And upon their introduction, I was thrilled to learn that out of the thousands of students eligible for COA's seven SGA positions, that four of those seven are held by Currituck County students, all of whom are students at NAP Early College. So I want to give a big shout-out to those students. Madison Sherman is their parliamentarian and pursuing an associate's degree in science. Noah Baloo is the Senator Chair. He is also pursuing an associate degree in science. Abby Burner is their Public Information Officer. She's pursuing her associate's degree in arts. And Tracy Collier is the Community Service Chair and pursuing an associate's degree in science. So excellent job. You do Currituck County very proud, so thank you. Also, congratulations to the Currituck County Finance Department and the Finance Director Sandra Hill for achieving financial excellence. We appreciate it as citizens when you spend and oversee our money so wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was out at the early voting site on Thursday when 900, and I believe it was 41 people voted, early voting. Friday was over 700, and then I think 500 on Saturday, for a total of 2,150 people that voted early voting. Not counting the over 500 absentee ballots that's already come into the Board of Elections. It's obvious that people are very interested in this election, and I encourage anyone that hears our voices here tonight to make sure that you do vote, because it's very important that this election is probably the most critical election in the history of this country, and I urge you to vote. And to comment on, piggyback on what Commissioner Jarvis said, I commend Sandra and the Finance Department for what they have done. Seems like it's getting old hat. It's almost an automatic, but that speaks highly of the integrity and the commitment of our Finance Department to make sure that the numbers that they submit and keep the books on are correct and accurate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. McCord.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To piggyback on what Commissioner Owen Etheridge said, make sure you get out and vote. Early vote, if you can. If you can't, absentee vote. Go vote on voting day. If you don't get out and vote, you can't complain. That's like a new rule for 2020, so I don't think that will happen, but that sounds good. Like you said, speaking of voting, I was showing Commissioner Beaumont just a few minutes ago, the signs being stolen. I think I have seven pictures sent to my phone. It's a Class III misdemeanor if you steal somebody's political sign. If you don't like a candidate, that's fine, you know, just don't like the candidate. Don't steal their sign. Signs cost money. People take time to put the signs out. I know Commissioner Etheridge and his wife went to Corolla and put out a ton of signs. They're not there anymore. So the wind didn't take them, because we haven't had that much wind, but it's a Class III misdemeanor if you get caught. We have, I believe we've caught one or two so far, but, you know, like you said, and we still have a couple of open cases where we have some photos of some vehicles, and like we're looking for them every day just to, you know, not to, but to set an example of stop stealing people's signs. It's happening everywhere. Next week, or actually this week, you're going to start seeing some school buses, those big yellow things on the road, and I am so excited to see the buses riding around the road. Our superintendent's here, Dr. Lutes. Don't drive like idiots. You will get tickets. We have no issue of doing that in this county, so like I said, you know, be careful, the buses and all that stuff, they're going to be moving. Couple positive notes, Parks and Rec baseball started. It's pretty cool, because there was a lot of people complained, and they saw the people using those ball fields that were paying for the travel teams and said, why didn't the county do this? Well, we didn't have sign-ups. Now we did, and kudos to the county manager. They put together, we got a bunch of teams, there's even some blended teams in like the 10 and 12, where they have some girls on the teams, and I've seen videos on social media of some girls getting some good hits, so like you said, I'm glad that they're out doing that, they're using the ball fields, over there in the Maple area. Two more, congrats, and I'm done. The county staff, and I love kind of sticking it to Dominion Power, my dad worked there 40 years, but congrats to four of our county employees for winning the sport clay shooting event. Dominion had won it, what, three years in a row? Three or four years in a row? They literally, I was told, and my dad worked there, like I said, for 40 years, they would give the guys time off to like shoot and practice. That was what I'd heard. But Jason Weeks, Sergeant Mike Corbell from the Sheriff's Department, Deputy Jeremy Evans from the Sheriff's Department, and Chandler Sawyer, four county employees beat the Dominion team, so that's pretty huge. And then the last thing, and I know we touched on it, and I might need the county manager's help, our inspector, out of 100 counties, was Inspector of the Year in the county, Ron?
Ron, and I'm going to actually look to Laurie to pronounce his last name.
Last name, that's why they want to try it.
Ron Shaker.
Okay. We're going to go with Ron. Ron's a good guy. Ron S. But congrats, like I said, those guys, you know, I mean, it's kind of like a thankless, you know, it's like writing somebody a parking ticket or a school speeding ticket. It's a thankless thing, but those guys, they do a good job, and I just want to recognize them. Like you said, school starts, you're going to see yellow, I'm excited, I can't wait to see a yellow bus drive down the road with not somebody practicing, so social distance, all that stuff, you know, all that good stuff, and we'll end at that.
All right, thank you. Yep, Route 12 will be slow again. Buses stop multiple times a day. Commissioner Beaumont.
So Commissioner Payman and I actually did participate in the sporting clays event last Thursday, and I can tell you that the dove population, at least, Mike, you can confess yourself, but is in no danger from me. Actually, I think, I actually think it's easier to shoot dove than it is those clays, but anyway, it was, that was a lot of fun. It's the first time I'd ever gone to Powell's Sporting Clays, and it was a lot of fun. And I would suggest, anyone that likes to shoot shotgun, I don't recommend practicing for 150 rounds prior to going, because
Shoulder's a little tight.
My shoulder was a little sore, but it was, it was a lot of fun. And then the second thing I want to do is give kudos to Mike Lane and Ocean Rescue continuously, but the county made a decision when we negotiated the most recent Ocean Rescue contract, that there was going to be kind of a shoulder season, and the benefit of the Corolla firefighters are that we were able to do some cross-training and actually get some folks ocean rescue training, lifeguard-type retrieval training. And last Friday, last Friday, Mike Lane, we had somebody get caught in a rip current, got hauled out to the sea. Mike Lane was the first rescue on site by not much, but he was first, right? And that's what really counted, but we had a combined effort rescue, and everything turned out great. The gentleman was able to get back to his family and go home as scheduled, so that's an important thing for a tourist town. And so kudos to Mike Lane, kudos to the training that's going on. That's all I got.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. All right, with that, we'll move on to the county manager's report. Mr. Stackletter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of to piggyback on the last comment from Commissioner Beaumont, one thing that we have looked at because of the increased tourism traffic that we have and the increased beach usage that we have, we will continue to have roving patrols up and down the beach from Ocean Rescue, going to extend that through actually Thanksgiving weekend. We're still seeing a lot of usage of the beach and actually a lot of usage of folks swimming in the ocean. The water's staying pretty warm this year, so we're going to extend that on out. Like I said, trucks will be roving up and down through Thanksgiving. Just kind of as a piece of information from the airport, I don't talk a whole lot about the airport at these meetings, but the airport is a huge asset to our community from an economic development standpoint. We've seen a real uptick in usage at the airport, and one of, if not the largest plane to ever come into Currituck County Airport, a Gulf
The largest.
It is the largest. So a Gulfstream Six came in on Sunday, so if you want to, it's pretty impressive looking, but we're seeing a lot more jet traffic. I think word's getting around with some of the folks who travel to this area, and they recognize that we're about 30 minutes closer to Elizabeth City, got a nice long runway, so it's exciting to see that traffic increase, and we hope that that activity will breed more activity out there. The only other thing I wanted to touch base on was to give the commissioners, as well as the general public, an update on schools, as far as construction, expansion, where we were, how we got here, where we're going. Start off by saying that I've really enjoyed working with Dr. Lutes in the short time he's been the superintendent. We've worked together to, I think, move forward on this issue. We started off, before I was even an employee for Currituck County, with conversations kind of putting out that growth was coming and letting the school board know that we need to start looking for land. From there, we got into an at-capacity situation with Moyoc Elementary in August of 2019. We started a small group that started looking at different parameters to find land. We identified some land, started to try to reach out to folks who own that land. As funny as it sounds, it was more difficult to get a hold of some folks than you would have thought. We have some folks who own land in Currituck County that aren't actually residents. We reached out to a couple of different properties. One of them had no interest in selling. The other one was currently under contract, and so we were directed by legal counsel for the folks who had it under contract, for the county not to talk to the owners anymore. They would prefer for us to talk to them. Since it was a potential development tract, we felt like that was more appropriate for the school board to have those conversations, so the school board began to have the discussions and negotiations with that development entity to move forward with trying to secure land. The conversations that I had presented to the board here, as well as to the school board, first of all, was that if we weren't, this was before we had school expansions in mind, that if we wanted to have a timeline of trying to have something done by August of 2023, we needed to hit kind of a June 1st deadline of 2020 in order to have land secured so we could start the design process. We kind of moved past that, but in the meantime of moving past that, came across a study that had been done in 2011 that laid out, you know, where they thought schools were going, where growth was going to occur, and gave some expansion potential at some of the schools. We identified the expansion of Moyoc Elementary and Moyoc Middle School as projects with a joint meeting with the Board of Education to move forward on that. It was a very productive conversation that we had that night. Since that time, if you remember at the last Commissioner meeting, we passed a resolution to do design-build on those expansion projects, so we are currently working on an RFQ so that we can go out and pick a design-build team. The hope is that we will have that out for the general, for contractors and design-build teams to review in November, with a, hopefully coming forward with a notice to proceed in June after we get all the contract work done and move forward from there. In the meantime, I believe that the school board is working on having another consultant come in and do another evaluation, similar to the one that was done in 2011, and so we are excited about those two projects and looking forward to those moving on. It does not mean that there should not continue to be a search for land. I think the school system is still engaged actively in trying to find and secure land, and as you know, we've encouraged them to do that from the get-go. We have some funds set aside to be able to secure land. For an elementary school would be kind of the first priority, and at some point, a middle school is going to have to come on the heels of that. These expansions will buy us some time, but they are not the, you know, the end goal, I should say. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that any commissioners have about school construction, how we're trying to address capacity issues at our different schools.
I think one of the things to note that came out of that joint meeting, the last one where we discussed these revisions to the schools, was not only, A, finding that plan that you happened to stumble upon in the library, but going forward, keeping that at the forefront, and having a plan going forward so that both boards can keep that moving along, so as we need to expand, contract, do whatever we have to do, that's there. We're not caught off-guard like we were by the sudden explosion of homes here and the people moving in here, and so it puts us on a much better footing for both boards for the future, so.
So as a point of clarity, we are not aware of any specific tract that has, that the school board has come to us and said to purchase, either with a contract for us to take for action?
No, if the school board, so if the school board found land that they went under contract on instead of closing date, then what the process would have been for us to come forward with a budget amendment to the Board of Commissioners, and then at that point, there would have been a vote. No, I've not seen any formal contract yet for any piece of school land.
Okay. So there is no school site yet?
Not yet. So, but like I said, it doesn't mean that there doesn't need to continue to be a search. You know, it's, we identified some characteristics. It could be they need to look outside of that box a little bit. It's, like I said, we have some time because of the expansion projects. Those are going to be at the forefront, but the faster that we can identify land and secure land, not just identify, but secure it under ownership, the faster that we, as the county, can get to work on designing a school, which means it's, the faster we come to a solution for the capacity issues that we have at Moyoc Elementary and soon-to-be Shawboro Elementary potentially.
So the other thing that you didn't touch on, and that's the actual financing of a new school, which, as I understand it, you know, we're going with the expansion route because that gets us capacity sooner rather than later. Not to eliminate or minimize the need for a new school going forward, but from a fiscal perspective, as I understood it, part of the rationale or part of the push was to try and get the school under construction sooner rather than later, through whatever financing the county would then acquire. Because of the other needs also coming down the pike, as I understand them specifically, potentially another middle school or middle school expansion, that that's driving multiple significant capital projects that are all going to kind of hit about every two years for roughly the next eight years, I'll say. And again, that's driving us to a different funding mechanism than originally we had hoped.
That's correct. I think an important thing for folks to hear is that originally, we were going to do a minor debt project for the elementary school, and it was going to be supplemented by roughly $11 million of state funding that was going to come down out of the budget. That was the budget now from two years ago that never got passed, and so that money disappeared because the budget was vetoed in Raleigh. So if that had happened, we maybe could have done that one project a little quicker. I think you're right. I think you're looking at several projects over the next eight years, every couple of years having a project. You know, the numbers that we've based for new schools were projects that were done in the calendar year 2019. I can tell you that what we have seen with some of our bidding that we've done over the last two or three months in particular, is that the cost of lumber and PVC in particular have skyrocketed. So, I mean, there's going to be added cost unless something gives there. Most of that's due to COVID. You know, I think that the issue is there's lumber mills that are shut down, so you could see some increase in the cost in general, but whenever you look at these projects, you know, multiple projects coming over multiple years, from a county standpoint, the best way to handle that is to try to go out for a longer-term debt so that we don't stack short debt on top of short debt and make ourselves in a financial position where we can't, don't have maneuverability to do other things that we need to do, because all we're discussing right now is the education component of the services provided to the citizens. You know, there's law enforcement, there's fire services, there's EMS services, there's DSS services, and so the longer we can stretch that debt out, then it gives us more maneuverability to be able to do things with some of these other areas of concern that we have. The longest, the way to get the longest period of debt is through a bond package. It'll let you go out roughly 40 years. Installment debt, you can go out 20 years. There are some bonds you can go out up to 30 years, so, but in my opinion, the best, the best option for covering that cost would be a longer-term debt so that it doesn't hem the county in, under the current revenue structure.
And when can that bond referendum, how soon can that bond referendum come before the voters of Currituck County?
The earliest that that bond referendum could come on would be fall of 2022, so the general election, so that's something that will need to be decided as we head into next, you know, middle of next calendar year, the Board of Commissioner level. I think one of the things that needs to influence that, though, is the study that the school system is going to have done to kind of give an idea of what schools you're going to need, so that informs the projects that we need to see come forward in Currituck County.
But step one, buy land.
Step one is buy land, because we can't begin the design, I mean, it's not feasible to begin design work till you know what site situation, what site issues you're dealing with, so.
And while we're on schools, I'd just like to, and maybe you can help elaborate, I keep getting asked the question, when is the county going to build a school? When is the county going to build this school? When is the county, and I always let them know, the commissioners don't, we don't decide which school and when they're needed. We rely on input from the other elected officials, your school board elected officials, to let the county know when schools are needed. And until they do their part and give us the information and tell us when, we don't just arbitrarily start building schools. And I think people need to know that, that the elected school board makes that decision and lets us know, hey, this is where we're at, we need to start planning, then that's when the county commissioners start getting involved. But like we stated before, we're going to start having more meetings to try to stay on top of this, but it's not the county commissioners that make that decision, and I don't know if that you want to eyebrow or not, but I mean, that's, I think, gets the mindset out there, is that the county commissioners are not building the schools timely enough. Well, we are relying on the other elected officials, the school board out there, to provide the information needed for us.
And I think that's a good point. Not only we can't, as I understand it, we, as the board, cannot just build a school.
Well, I don't know if we could, but it would be foolish, I think, for us to build a school without any input from the educational professionals that are in our county. It works at its best when it is a collaboration between the funding organization, which is the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, and the educating organization, which is the Currituck County Board of Education. At the end of the day, the biggest input that you all have is just the funding. That really is, you know, as far as design, functionality, location, all of those are things that I truly believe the school system has to have a say in in order to make it a functional school at any level.
That's what they do. And there is a duality in that, sorry, Commissioner Etheridge. What you were saying, we also, through planning and joint meetings with the school board, advised them of what our future's looking like, where we're seeing growth, where we're seeing hotspots of growth. Obviously Moyoc's a hotbed. As that progresses further south or other areas of the county, we have conversations with the school board, or at least manager to superintendent, so that they're aware and can start having some of these tools as well, in their toolbox to help them out. Ms. Etheridge.
I know several years ago, when we were building those three new schools, we were told, yeah, the Board of Commissioners can build it, but the Board of Education doesn't have to accept the building, and that's why it needs to be a collaborative effort. And looking at the long-range needs, Dr. Lutes, have you developed a charge for requests for qualifications of the group that will be looking at that and studying it?
So far, we've had two formal proposals for it, and we're waiting on third.
I'd like to say something, too. Talking, I get that phone call all the time, when are y'all building a new high school in Moyoc? When are y'all building a new high school in Moyoc? 2014, I was a county commissioner. I'm not like Commissioner Etheridge, I think he's had like 25 terms, no, I'm just kidding. 2014, I found this sheet when I was a commissioner in the past, to let people know where they always say the high school, the high school, the high school. There's an additional about 10 kids in Currituck High School since 2014. That's six years, that's a long time. NAP, there's about, about 10, so between those two, at the high school age, the middle school age between Moyoc, which was like 40-some plus, 41, since 14, and Currituck Middle is down 15, I believe, since 2001. Now, the rise in the elementary schools was rise in the elementary schools was, was a lot more. But like far as, I've gotten that phone call like 100 times and my response is I'm not on the school board. But the high school, the numbers aren't supporting at this time. You know, it might 10 years, five years, whatever. I don't know. But like, we take a beating probably sometimes about the school stuff. And like you said, the statistics and the numbers, this was a form when I was a commissioner in 14 that I had, six years ago. And it's about 20 kids at the high school, between two high schools. So I mean, that's, with all the new growth, that's not a lot. Just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
One last thing on the high school, and I will remind people, when that current high school was built, it was built for 2,000 students in terms of infrastructure. The classroom building was built for the possibility of expansion to carry it to 2,000. And it was put in the center of the county so that children rode equal distances from one end to the other. And, you know, it would be hard to justify building a school here and not building one down here when they have to ride the same distances. I can remember when there was a high school in Moyoc and a high school at Griggs. And it always above the bridge and below the bridge mentality. And they consolidated the high school to try to bring the county together. And that was the purpose of, one of the purposes of consolidation. So keep that in mind, that, that school's infrastructure was built for 2,000 students.
And the cost of a new high school was?
Eighty-five million?
No, way more than that.
If, with the current cost of construction, it'd probably be more than that.
Yeah. Yep. Way more than we make in a year.
One, one other thing, Mr. Chairman, if I could just take one more minute on the manager's report. We do have a meeting scheduled this week between the county DEQ, which is the Environmental Quality Department, the owners of the Eagle Creek Sewer System, the contractors for the Eagle Creek Sewer System, and the homeowners association to try to help facilitate some kind of discussion so that what has happened, what happened in Eagle Creek recently would not happen, you know, again, in the future, if it does happen, at least there's a way to try to mediate the issues where people just don't have service. Hopefully, at the next commissioner meeting, I'll have some kind of update to be able to give. In this case, we're just the facilitator. We have no authority to require anything. But we're just trying to get to all the people in the, in the right room so that they can have that discussion.
Mr. Chairman, one other announcement. The Fire EMS Advisory Board meets monthly. There are two meetings that are held in different areas. Next Monday, this coming Monday night's meeting is at Knott's Island, because that is a fire district. They have, they actually pay a fire tax to help offset the costs of the firefighters that are in Knott's Island. So we hold, every other quarter, it changes. So this, this month is going to be at Knott's Island. So we do not ironically have a Knott's Island representative at this time on the Fire EMS Board. And I would encourage anybody that is watching or listening that lives in Knott's Island and is a member of the Volunteer Fire Department to please show up and volunteer your services. But we'll be there Monday night at the fire station. Roger that.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, sir. All right. If there's nothing further for the county manager, we'll move on to public hearings. As I said, item A has been moved to November 16th. Item B, PB 20-13, Complete Auto Credit, has requested an automobile sales and use permit for property located at 1383 Keratoke Highway, parcel ID, I'm not going to go through all that, Moyoc Township. I will need anyone who's going to speak to this to come forward and be sworn in this evening. If you would, please place your left hand on the Bible. Like you, if you all saw, I swear that the testimony you're about to be given shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you. All right. First up, we have our county staff. We have Ms. LaCicero this evening. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The application before you tonight is for 1383 Keratoke Highway, and it is for a use permit for car sales or automobile sales or rentals. It is located here. This is the aerial of 1383 Keratoke Highway. And the name of the business is Complete Auto Credit. It is next to Mr. Ennis's building and across from the solar farm. It is owned general business, and we do allow car, automobile sales and rentals with a use permit in general business. It's located next to HI and across the road from another portion of general business. It is rule on the land use, 2006 land use plan, the land use classification. So this property has a little bit of history with us. Mr. Sessino came before you in June of 2019, and you all granted a use permit for this property for the same use. And it was for the following, these conditions were placed on their use permit, that the applicant will have 90 days to complete having the building to commercial standard as required by the UDO and receive a certificate of occupancy. The improvements will be made to the parking and display areas in accordance with this, this approved site plan. Right here, it's in front of you. The landscaping will be upgraded in accordance to the Unified Development Ordinance. The trees can be moved to keep the 25-foot area of visibility for the line of sight and the 20, so be measured from the existing curb. The display areas, one, will be screened with a type A buffer yard and also keeping with a 25-foot setback area of visibility. And the outdoor storage of vehicles shall occur only within the approved display areas. Well, time passed, and the applicant did not meet all these standards. We followed our enforcement procedure, and eventually, on February earlier this year, the Board of Commissioners revoked their use permit. You do have that order in your, in your packet. But based on applicant's findings and what the board saw, that use permit was revoked. However, Mr. Sessino reapplied for a new use permit for the same use and using the same site plan. So you see there's going to be, is this? Okay. I saw it. So, right here. Okay. This, the existing paving is going to be their display area. There'll be new gravel here. You see the landscaping that they're planning to put in, the shrubbery and the trees along the property lines and the fences. We had staff that went out there last Thursday, and the required landscaping along the front still has not been installed, and the buffer's not been installed. Their sign does not meet UDO standards, nor did they ever receive a sign permit for that. There are vehicles parked, display vehicles displayed in the required emergency turnaround. Vehicles displayed in the required setbacks and the buffering along the property lines have not been installed. And vehicles, they're still being stored outside the approved display area. So, and vehicles are still displayed on the grass. And it is a requirement of ordinance that they be displayed on, on an approved surface. So, so if the applicant meets the burden of proof for these standards tonight, staff does recommend adoption, but subject to a little bit more intense conditions, and those are listed in your staff report, but I'm going to go over them, that a revised site plan should be produced by a professional surveyor, architect, or engineer showing full compliance with the UDO shall be submitted for review. The site plan shall clearly depict areas intended for display of vehicles and areas intended for customer employee parking. The site plan shall address all requirements of the Fire Department, North Carolina Fire Code regarding traffic flow, emergency vehicle access, vehicle storage in proximity to the building, et cetera. That the type A landscaping buffer is required between the street and all display areas, and all permits required for adherence to the site plan shall be obtained prior to commencement of work. And that was one of the enforcement issues is that the, although they did put the paving in the front, they did not get a zoning compliance permit prior to the paving being installed. So these are the standards that you would have to find as the burden of proof on the applicant. The applicant demonstrates a proposed use will meet the following findings, that the use will not endanger the public health or safety, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands, it will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans, and the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. And typically, staff gives input on at least on two of these, that the use is in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. It is designated rule in the, in the land use plan, land use classification there. But it is owned general business. And once again, it is an allowed use with a use permit in a GB zoning. This use will not have an impact on county's, on the adequate public facilities regarding schools. It'll have minimum impact. We will still be able to serve them, law enforcement, fire, and all those other county services.
So Ms. LaCicero, you said a fire, and clearly, the way that it is sitting now, we absolutely couldn't probably pull in there with a fire truck. We'd have to park out in the middle of the highway or something. Based on the pictures, there's no fire lane, there's no, there's no ingress or egress for them to get a truck in there. Is that true to say?
I actually asked Chief Milton to take a look at that.
Okay.
The way that the condition the property is currently in, no. If they met the letter of that use, of the site plan that they put in, you do have the potential to be able to get an emergency vehicle in. It's not ideal, but you could get it in and, and fight a fire. There's just enough space.
What's the, from the front, we'll just use the service truck, the white Ford, what's the distance from, I mean, we might not be able to know, that might be the applicant question, from the front of that truck to where the display vehicles are? Because I know the display vehicles are about even with that truck.
This would be the only schematic that we have for them.
About maybe 60 feet?
I think that's a question you'd have to ask them. I don't, I don't think.
I'm not even sure they can answer that without a tape measure. A couple of questions for you. Did they, they racked up some fines? Were those fines ever paid?
No.
So TRC wanted to see a revised site plan by, that she wanted to reproduce by a professional surveyor, architect, or engineer showing full compliance with the EADO. So you wanted that after the fact or before the fact to make sure? Because once the cat's out of the bag, so to speak, we've been here before with, with this. Does it not make sense for us to have a real surveyors' design here before we went through this process or?
It would. And that's why I was made, tried to make the statement, if the applicant meets his burden of proof, that he can meet these standards. And if, but just like you said, Mr. Chairman, if you grant it now, based upon these recommendations, and with the history that we know, a recent history with this, with this property, it would become an enforcement issue again. And we may be right back here.
And the original permit had conditions for improvements inside the building as well. Do you know if those were done?
Those were all done. The only exception is, I think there was a handicap sign that needed to be posted outside for the parking area. The way our system is set up, until zoning approves it, we can't be finaled as far as the building.
Right.
But they have done everything with the exception of the handicap sign on the parking space.
Are they still being fined, like daily?
No, because they have, when they submitted their new application, it stayed there, stayed enforcement.
But, because I remember when this last came before us, and one of the sticking points was machinery that was beyond the fence, that in fact, there was at least one, if not two, school buses that were back there. And we heard about how they couldn't move, they couldn't be started, they couldn't get them out of there, et cetera, et cetera. And I drive past there almost daily. And I can tell you, I've never seen the back of that facility empty, ever. So at some point, I would think compliance would come in first, and then we'd come down this path. But I guess we don't control that.
Commissioner Beaumont, the way that our ordinance is written, the, an applicant seeking the proper approval is a way to remedy the violation. And so therefore, we, as, as our ordinance views it, that is them trying to come into compliance. And so that is recognized as taking steps to try to remedy the violation.
Are you limited by the number of times that you can apply?
So I, and I'm going to answer this, but Laurie's probably better equipped to answer it. If you apply for a use permit and are denied, you have to wait a year to come back forward? If you have a use permit, and I said something wrong? Go ahead.
I would defer actually to the county attorney.
There we go.
Because it's a quasi judicial proceeding, is it, that it would be?
Under the legal principle of race to the cause, a same or similar application that is, that may be denied in a quasi judicial proceeding may not come back for rehearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we didn't deny the last one. We revoked the permit.
You revoked the permit. That's, that's why it is able to be back before you tonight.
Yeah. And I asked that question in the revocation hearing.
Because wasn't there an issue as to actually having a valid auto sales license last time?
He does with the DMV, although there's, because our use permit is kind of in flux or we're trying to remedy the situation.
Understood.
Okay.
When was the TRC comments given back to him?
That was July, June 17th.
These were sent back. It's here. We heard it in September, probably the third or fourth week of September. I would need to.
So the June, but you had a TRC. It says the Technical Review Committee recommends adoption, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, on June 17th, 2019. Oh, that's the original.
No, the original.
That's the original. Sorry. Didn't catch the year on there.
The most recent ones.
Yeah, September.
It'd been September.
So roughly 30 days.
And so, but that furthers my question earlier. June 17th of 2019, they wanted to see professional site plans, and we're back to a piece of paper. One more? Or was that not a condition?
That was not a condition of the original, original permit.
Okay.
That is, that was, that happened in the September TRC.
Well, no, this, I'm looking at the TRC dated from June.
Yeah, that was.
That was just the 2019.
I think that's in errors.
So it should be 2020.
Yeah, it should have been September 2020.
Okay. So the TRC recommendations we have in front of us tonight on packet page 70 are in fact what went out this September to the applicant. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So make sure. Okay. Anything further from Ms. LaCicero?
Just one quick question. The photos that she showed us, what, when were they, when were those photos taken, roughly?
They were taken this past Thursday.
Okay. They're just recent. Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything further? All right. Thank you. At this time, I'll invite the applicant up or applicant's representative to state their case. Would you please state your name and address for the record, sir?
Mark Sessino, 1709 Stone Church Mews, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 23455. Mark Cicino, 1709 Stone Church Muse, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 23455. I have some current pictures taken today that I'd like to distribute, is that fine?
That'd be fine. Mr. Beaumont?
Thank you.
Did you also, you didn't include a picture of the back of the building, that was, looked like a charger sitting back there and several other cars. Did you get those out from behind the building as well?
I didn't realize that the, well, you can kind of see that from the side, there is pavement there.
Okay.
There are a couple of cars that I will need to move. I thought the issue was behind the fence, that bigger area where the school buses were, and are no longer. And that, there's the pictures, probably five and six, that's all the way in the back of the building.
But there are some vehicles behind the building, right?
Behind the building, I do have a paved area where cars are allowed to be. There'd probably be two I do need to get out of there.
But this, but I guess what I'm struggling with is, it's been almost a year, and, and they're still back there, and we just saw Laura's pictures from Thursday, and you probably took these yesterday or today.
All right, these were today.
So you're just now doing this?
Right before the meeting. I went by there at 2:30 today, and it didn't look like what's in these pictures.
Because I drive by there once or twice a day, and...
As a matter of fact, it was a black Mercedes.
If I was in violation for something, I wouldn't wait for the day before to try to clean something up to maybe look good, but...
So where did the cars magically go?
Well, a lot were consolidated. The, with COVID, the auctions have been closed, they've recently reopened, I've been sending...
That's true, and that is not true. You may not be able to go in person, but you can bid all day online. You can, you can ship cars to auctions, can you not?
Correct. The last several weeks, I've been sending two or three.
But they haven't been closed the entire time, they closed for a little while. I have friends in the auto business.
They closed a long time, and they weren't accepting, they were accepting vehicles from certain dealerships, typically larger ones, lease companies.
So they weren't, so the smaller dealers such as independents, they weren't taking your cars?
And they haven't been for probably about two months now.
Okay.
My understanding, and I guess I'm mistaken, was, um, get the use permit, see what the restrictions are, and then comply with it. It's definitely a mistake on my part. I'd like to tell a little bit about me, Barbara, my wife of 18 years, and I have two college children. Austin is a...
I'm going to hold you off there. So this, you have to present evidence here tonight. This is not, this is not a personal thing. So...
Okay, fair enough.
You, but I do want to address that statement, because you came before us once, we granted you an extension, you came back before us for the special use permit, we put those conditions on, you were asked, how much time do you need to complete those changes? You said, give me this amount of time. We said, great.
Yeah.
We approved everything, we get to that point, very little effort was made at that point in time to actually get there. Then you had some other reason that you were ill, or someone was ill, or...
I was ill.
Right, and so that it didn't, so we let that slide, so...
Nothing was let slide, that was...
We gave you the benefit of the doubt, okay? Now we're back here again, we had to revoke your permit because it wasn't done, our staff comes out last week, and it's still a problem, and magically today on Monday, you're in compliance. So I just, sort of, maybe.
Almost.
Yes, almost.
So, I just, you know, we're having a hard time believing that you're going to be a good steward and run your business appropriately in this county. We've given you plenty of time to do, to come to that, we understand COVID was an issue, we all dealt with that. And I get that the auctions were closed for a couple of months, but, so your job here today is to establish evidence to those four findings of fact.
Okay.
So...
So, yes, I am almost in compliance, less two cars in that back area, directly behind the building, and those will be gone tomorrow. And I currently employ two full-time Currituck residents. I can just be here in front of you and tell you that I will comply, I'm looking to have a partnership with the county. I think I've been looking at it different and thinking about checking off a box, like, hey, I got the permit, let's move on. And that was...
Okay, getting back to what the chairman stated, you have to provide evidence about the endangerment to the public health and safety and the value of the adjoining property. That's what we're waiting to hear is your evidence for all this.
Right.
Okay.
So prior to me taking over for the, and having a dealership here, the property was vacant. A vacant property definitely hurts the value of the local properties more so. And improved property with, and that's getting improved going forward as well, will improve property values. As far as any, the public safety, there is not an issue with that, I think that's been established, and that would probably be outside of my expertise.
So did you bring any expert witnesses to talk about that?
Nope, it wasn't, I believe we had our preliminary meetings, and that the county wrote up that it doesn't affect public safety or police or fire. I do want the same thing. I want to be a beneficial part of the community, I do want to have an improved property that looks good and is welcoming to all, and giving the opportunity, whatever restrictions you put on me, I will meet 100% and...
Why should we believe that? Why should we believe that whatever restrictions are placed upon this business, that you're willing to follow them? What evidence could you possibly present to this board? Because we've been dealing with your site for a year and a half, ballpark, and we, as the chairman said, over and over, we granted extensions, we granted you more time, we gave you the benefit of the doubt, and, you know, they were going to leave, and the only reason the buses are back there is I can't get them to move. Well, I guess the buses are gone now.
They are.
But they made a lot more room for a lot more vehicles. And, you know, and, and one of the stipulations that we've done in the last year is unless you're a real estate appraiser and can provide the no kidding analysis that shows that you're not going to detrimentally impact the property beside you, you suggesting that, because I'll tell you, it looks like a junkyard. It has looked like a junkyard for the last year, and it may look great today, but what do you tell us?
Driving by, it does not look like a junkyard. I take exception to that. I have a front line, I have over $100,000 in vehicles sitting there.
It's the back, the back land, that ground that's not supposed to have any vehicles on, where there's vehicles and vehicles and vehicles. We could pull it back up here for those that want to see it.
Sure.
That looks like a junkyard, sorry.
That I will agree with, and there are no vehicles, and there's zoning compliance to make sure I'm doing my job and keeping it. I handled the paving, I handled all the commercial, the building improvements that were required, everything was handled. The last time, all I didn't get done was the landscaping.
No, you had vehicles still parked in the back, that were not supposed to be there. And, and I'll tell you, I'm glad that it all cleans up, but for there still to be vehicles parked where there are not supposed to be vehicles parked, and you're here before us to ask for a permit? Again, it's been 18 months, and anyway, going back to what the chairman said, I'm sorry, do you have a real estate expert that can testify that there will not be detrimental impact to the property next door?
Well, the neighbor's here, and he believes, he's going to speak to it, we can ask him if he believes it's not, it's over the last 18 months that his property's been impacted detrimentally by me being there.
Please do.
I write, like Commissioner Beaumont said, he rides by it daily, I ride by it sometimes six times in a day, it all depends. I did notice this afternoon, y'all were actively working. If you don't mind me asking, what time did you take these pictures?
So it was over the course of days that I...
I mean, like I said, I've seen you doing work, I ride by there, it's...
Since Thursday, when he, when he came out and says, hey, I'm taking pictures for the meeting on Monday.
And you started?
Yes, I got that done immediately.
Like I said, because the front does, I will say, like you said, the front does look better, the back, there's no buses, I don't, I don't, no, okay, I didn't see any more buses.
No, there was some kind of white thing back there today.
Yeah. Okay, that's all, I was just curious on that.
What's the holdup with the landscaping? I mean, that doesn't seem like a complicated act to improve any building. And when I drove by this weekend, it just looks like a pavement with cars sitting on it, it doesn't, doesn't have any landscaping. So what's the holdup there? I mean, why have you made no effort to put any kind of landscaping?
Well, when I, I apologize for cutting you off. When I did reapply, I had a conversation with Mr. Littoral, who stated, and I was soliciting bids for the landscaping, and I was told to hold off until the meeting because the requirements could change here.
If I, if I can speak to that, of course, that's the advice we're going to give to somebody who's coming through for a, for a permit, because they might not get approved, and we don't want them to put the money out of pocket. However, this particular case had a use permit, the landscaping was required during that use permit, and it wasn't put in. So I take a little exception to, to the statement that staff led him astray somehow. I mean, there was an opportunity to put it in when it was appropriate to, and he failed to put it in.
All right, sir, so there was a use permit there for vehicles, and it had elapsed or never been used, and something to that effect?
Well, he had a use permit that was revoked, and during that time, between when it was approved and revoked, he should have put it in.
Prior to that, there was something...
When I first went to planning, I was told that the, there's a use permit in place, and I was good to go. I was given a letter from zoning stating I can open up a dealership. And at that time, that is what I did. Months later, they came back and says, note that use permit that we told you you could open up with, it isn't valid.
That's right.
And that's where the whole issue came from.
Right.
Otherwise, we would have been here prior to me even opening, getting things handled, which would have been better in retrospect.
Well, and then, and that's when we, we gave you all that leniency in the world, because I believe we had screwed up to some degree, and, and we said, just come back in, go through the use permit process, we granted you extra time because, you know, obviously you were ill, and then asked you to complete these things, and you said, great, here's my timetable. So, so we, we did our part ostensibly to get you, keep you up and running, and keep you going as a dealership.
Right.
Okay.
When you got the latest TRC recommendations, did you contact a licensed surveyor to draw a map with all the information?
Tonight is the first time I'm seeing that. I have not received the recommendations.
Do you have an email address?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure they email it to you, and everybody gets that. I've been through multiple sets of these things over the years, and I've always had...
I have my personal and business email on file.
All right, well, Mrs. Cicero will take a minute to look that up, but I have a feeling you got that information sent to you. And even, we follow up on those things, that this... Okay. Is there anything further that you'd like to add at this point in time?
Well, I would like to say that I'm back to a situation where the landscaping, I'm more than happy to have it drawn up professionally. All the construction, the commercial portion, that, all of that's been handled. I would like to be able to move forward, and I will definitely meet anything you've put upon me.
What happened with the landscaping drawn from the first use permit?
The landscaping, well, I wound up in the winter, and...
This is the first time it's been...
Okay, that's not what I was told when I came back in front of you, you made that clear, saying that I should have planted. But that was the only thing holding up at that point. The paving, which was a very expensive endeavor, was all done. All the commercial codes, everything that they required was all done. The landscaping, and I think there were two vehicles at that time in the back, in the very back of the property, that, and we had had a ton of rain, I couldn't, I had to actually have trucks come in and tow those buses out, which I did. But, so the landscaping, it was turning in the winter, I got ill, honestly, I thought I wasn't even going to be here, and I'm okay, I'll definitely move forward, I'll meet any requirements put upon me.
Okay. Anything further, questions, comments for...
I do have one, so basically, I made notes from Mrs. Cicero. So the landscaping is an issue, the sign, the not parked properly in the back, which, I mean, that's a couple of vehicles, I mean, that's...
Two vehicles.
A 62nd fix. The site plan, you don't have an issue with that?
No.
Was there anything else I'm missing, Mrs. Cicero?
That was the big one. They got to get a permit for their sign and bring the sign into compliance. There's no handicap sign at the handicap parking area.
You can see those in the pictures now?
You see the blue?
There's blue.
They have to have the ADA, so...
There's a marking on the ground, the sign on the wall.
Yeah, he would need an ADA sign, and if it's in a paved area, it's going to need to be, to be marked.
Yeah, and you can see that's...
And I believe one of the other issues that was raised is that it looked like there was inventory parked on places that weren't designated on the site plan as a display area. But I haven't seen the new pictures, so I don't know.
Actually, on the one picture he does have, I didn't notice it the first time, there's two handicap parking spots with concrete.
Concrete and...
Concrete pad, and it is, and it is marked, okay, yes.
Yes. So, quite a lot of improvement since last Thursday, and I know, shouldn't be waiting for that. Many of you are small business owners, you understand the amount of hats you wear, the amount of decisions you make during the day. I did feel that we come here, we get the approval, I get a list of what I need to comply with, and then do it. Wrong approach to take, but over the last four or five days, I think you can see I put forth a very valiant effort, and I will continue to do that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mrs. Cicero, did you get, dig into, find anything?
I tried to contact Mr. Littoral to see about, and he hasn't gotten back with me.
Okay.
I can step outside and make that call.
All right, at this time, I'm going to open a public comment on this, and I only have one person signed up, and James, is it Ennis?
Yes.
I can't.
I'm just messing.
Cursive. Come on up, sir. If you would please state your name and address for the record, sir?
James Ennis, 1219 Toast Creek. If you're going to entertain an approval, my input was simply to address the line of sight, which you heard me do 18 months ago, and that was to request that you consider not requiring the applicant to, or not preventing anything that might obstruct our ability to see safely around the front of the building, which is approximately... which is approximately from the utility poles.
It was like twenty feet or something we came up with?
We did, and I, I uploaded this morning a video. I don't know if it made its way.
I've got it pulled up, but we'll see if it'll. Yeah, we.
The, the reason I did that was just so you could see that it really is crucial that we can see around the front of the building for myself, anybody else that runs space there, comes in, goes out, and the other basis, because if there is an obstruction, there is simply not time to exit safely. I have had at least two accidents that I've witnessed myself in front of the office by people that have either broken down or been a DOT truck happened to park right in front there. So it does happen. And Mr., I must say that Mr. Sisino has, he's, he's done what he told me he would do, and that is to keep everything clear for the most part, so.
Okay. Well, we're trying to load that up just so we can see it from here.
So can I ask Mr. Ennis one question? So, okay, or not. I'll ask you later. No, I'm just kidding. The, um, so you have not had any issue far as any kind of blockage for public safety, you know, coming out with Mr. Sisino. You have not had an issue?
Nine times out of ten, no, sir, because if I, other, yeah, if this, well, like, there's occasional, like this one instance, you can see where he has probably a customer parked in front of where he normally parks the vehicles. And where he normally parks the vehicles doesn't obstruct the vehicles off. And he's done, he has cooperated with me, not that he has to, but he's been a gentleman and has done that.
Okay. So really, for you, it's keeping that line of vegetation cut down, so it's not.
You can see that as soon as the vehicle comes around the corner, if you're going to pull out, you're already creating a hazard.
Right.
You've got to be able to see around the corner because they're coming in a hurry.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item this evening? Okay, I'll close the public comment. And any further discussion from the board? Open the floor for a motion.
I'd like to make a, I think, my.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was going to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to, um, to move to deny PB 2013 Complete Auto Credit Use Permit because the applicant has not demonstrated the purpose, the proposed use meets the Use Permits Review Standards of the UDO. The use will endanger the public health and safety. The applicant did not provide any evidence to meet the burden of proof that the sales of vehicles will not endanger the public health or safety. The use will injure the value of adjoining property and lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. The applicant did not provide evidence to meet the burden of proof that the use of automobile sales will not injure the value of the adjoining or abutting lands. The use will not be in conformity with the land use plan or other official adopted plans. CA1, the important impact, or excuse me, economic tourism and community image benefits of attractive functional major highway corridors through Currituck County shall be recognized. Such highway corridors, beginning with US 158 and North Carolina 168, shall receive priority attention for improved appearance and development standards to click driveway access, landscaping, buffering, signage, lighting, and tree preservation. ML4, Currituck County recognizes that the appearance and traffic moving function of the North Carolina 168, US 158 corridor is of exceptional importance to both the near-term quality of life and long-term economic prospects for, for residents and property owners in the mainland area. The transportation and community appearance policy sections of this policy shall be implemented to give priority to this issue. US 158, North Carolina 168 Highway Corridor Plan identifies specific standards for protecting both the traffic moving functions, function as well as the general appearance of this important highway corridor. I'm sorry. And that is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
Can I ask a question before we get to second?
Of course.
So if we do this denial, what does that mean in terms of him coming back before us?
Cannot come back before Mr. McCray?
Yes, he, he would not be able to come back before you with a, the same or similar application.
So someone else would have to acquire the property and come forward with the, if they want to have the same type of business there? Is that basically what it boils down to?
Yes.
Okay.
So basically, it still could be used for that, but somebody else would have to come before us with something else?
Yes. So we have a motion. We have a second.
I'd second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We have one negative.
A nay for me, too.
A nay for you? Uh, that puts us at three, two, four, two, excuse me. So the motion carries. All right. Need a recess for anything for a few minutes? Everybody want to continue?
Let's plug along.
What's that, ma'am?
Let's plug right along.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item of this new business, item eight, PB 19-20 for Farm Motion to Renew. Commissioner Etheridge, you asked for this to be put on the agenda this evening, so I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason I asked it to be put back on is I don't believe we procedurally handled it correctly at the last meeting. There was a motion for approval that was denied, but I don't think it was ever properly denied, and I think it still is on the table. And the reason I say that is the board never took affirmative action to, to deny the rezoning, and that action is required by the UDO. The Board, following a legislative public hearing, shall decide the application in accordance with Section 2.3.10, Decision Making Body Review and Decision, and Section 2.4.4D, Conditional Resoning Review Standards. I'll say that the decision shall be one of the following: approval with conditions included in the application, approval subject to any revised or additional conditions, denial of the conditional rezoning, and remand of the rezoning request back to the Planning Board for further consider, consideration. UDO 2.4.4. D8A, the Board must adopt a consistency statement to support one of those four decisions, and we did not do that. We just voted to deny the approval and went on. So with that being said, that we must adopt a consistency statement, I don't, that's why I think it's still open. So I did contact, and I think the county attorney also contacted the School of Government, and I got back an answer from Trey Island, who I, who is the procedural expert, so to speak, at the School of Government, on a question about UDO versus rules of procedure. And I accept what he says, that the UDO would trump the rules of procedure. But then he went to David Owens, and David's been at the School of Government a long time. And he's inclined to say that a failure to adopt a motion isn't the same thing as a denial, and therefore that the Board didn't finally dispose of the rezoning request. David Owens sees an argument that the Board's vote should be regarded as a substantive motion or decision. He remembered a case a few years ago in which a Superior Court judge held that a failure to approve a rezoning request did not equate to denial. But he did say that the decision was not binding on other judges in the state because it was not made by the Court of Appeals or the Supreme Court. I just think that we need to do it right. I think we need to bring it back at the first meeting in November or second meeting and dispose of it or hear it again properly, so that we will be in compliance with our own rules. I just want to be fair about it.
So in that same email, there's another sentence there that says, this is from Trey. In short, my take is that the UDO's 12-month ban applies if the Board's failure to approve the rezoning request constitutes a denial of the same. For guidance on that last point, I turned to my colleague, David Owens, which is the paragraph that you just read. So we have two different people proffering two different opinions, and Mr. Owens equivocates a little bit in his answer. And when we heard this case, we actually, we had the motion for approval, and, and that was turned down. And I asked the county attorney at that time, did we need to have another motion put forward? And in his considered opinion, he said, we do not. We can move on. And at this time, I'll ask, I'd like to expound on that because we do have precedents going back throughout the county's.
Yes, it was, it was my opinion, and it is, that, and, and that's based upon the practice of the county and the manner, I guess, in which the rules have been interpreted. That in the, in the past, when there's been a motion to approve, a zoning application that is denied, the application has then been, been deemed denied, and the Board continues on with its business. In fact, I can think of one circumstance in which there was no motion made at all. The application could not even get a motion to approve or deny, and that is since the Board deemed the matter denied and moved on. And in that particular situation, the applicant was required to wait for the one year that's provided for in the ordinance. So I, I guess I look at, I look at this as much from practice and interpretation over these many years as to how these zoning matters are handled and viewed if a motion to approve is denied. And there, there is a remedy here that I think would, without getting into my opinion, two lawyers at the School of Government, one who gives two different opinions, so you get four. There's, there's a UDO provision that, that can cure this and remedy this, which is the provision relative to the inability for an applicant to bring forward the same or similar application on the same piece of property for a period of one year, unless the applicant can, can make application to the Planning Director, who may then bring forward to the Board of Commissioners a request that upon the Board's finding of one of four findings, just only one is necessary, from a supermajority vote of the Board, that the application would be allowed to continue forward for processing and consideration by this Board before the one-year period has passed. Now granted, in this particular incident, in this particular matter, the PDR, Conditional Zoning, is no longer available. That's been removed from the ordinance. But something similar, as the Planning Director and I have discussed, is the MXR zoning district. And the Planning Director, I think, believes that it may well be with some tweaking, essentially the same documentation that was presented in the prior application for the PDR district might well be sufficient to move forward on an MXR zoning application. But first, of course, the step would be to come to this Board for one of those, a finding of one of the four elements that would allow the matter to go forward without waiting for a one-year period. It seems to me that would clear up any kind of gray area or legal issue with regard to how this matter was dealt with at your last meeting and the regular practice and history of how the Board has applied these standards for at least as many years as I can remember.
How quickly could that process start? Within a week?
I think it's a matter, according to the ordinance, of the individual bringing forward their request. And the Planning Director, if she sees that it's a same or similar application on the same property, then she would bring that to the Board of Commissioners for you all, for this Board, to make the determination as to whether one of the four elements is in existence that would allow you to vote to, to, to proceed with the application going through its regular process.
And that, and that, at that time, the, the applicant would, could offer up test, uh, evidence to support one of the four findings of fact.
But sir, sir, I mean, it's not a quasi-judicial hearing. But it certainly could present any information or evidence they might have to support one or more of the elements.
And is it safe to say that that burden is fairly easy to meet? I believe one, one of them is fairly simple.
All I had here, pulled out, but.
Do you want me to read those, Ike?
Yes.
That there is a substantial change in circumstances relevant to the issues or facts considered during review of the prior application that might reasonably affect the decision-making body's application of the relevant review standards to the development proposed in the new application, or new or additional information is available that was not available at the time of review of the prior application, and that might reasonably affect the decision-making's body application of the relevant review standards to the development proposed on the new application, or the new application proposed to be submitted is materially different from the prior application, or the final decision on the prior application was based on material mistake of fact.
And that's, that's the one I'm thinking of, new or additional information that might have affected our decision-making. An absence of information, new information may have come to light, and the applicant come forward, present that information to us, and possibly have a different outcome going forward.
At, at least to the extent of being permitted to go forward with the application without having to wait for a year.
So I guess that UDO 2.4.4. D8A and B, where it says the Board must adopt a consistency statement to support one of the four decisions, doesn't, doesn't mean anything then.
But we did.
Because we did not adopt a consistency.
When the motion was made, those four findings were put forward. Four of the, four of the seven of us rejected that. So that was met. The question is, and then there's, there's an absence there to the Board. If there's no vote at all to the contrary, or any motion put forward, what happens to it? Do we sit here for days until that happens? I mean, that's, by, by, by what you've read, that is exactly, because there is no context in the UDO under which the Board cannot walk out of the room without proffering some kind of a motion one way or the other. And in that case, it just states how we have to make the motion, is what I read of that. Is that, is that someone in the ballpark?
Obviously, the words of the ordinance make a difference. But I think also the manner in which the ordinance has been interpreted and applied over time makes a difference as well. And so the question might also arise that if, if the view and interpretation now is changing, how many applications then come back to life that have been denied when a motion to approve did not pass?
How would a court, how do they typically, if you know, look at the historical practice? In this instance, we have historically done a, if, if, and we were taught that very early on when I first came on, that in the absence of, of a motion, this is deemed denied, and we would move on. And that's why I brought it up again at this particular hearing.
I think it'd be, it'd be an aspect, I guess, of what a court might consider as to how the ordinance has been applied over a period of time. But it, it also may well come down to the Court's interpretation of what the ordinance means.
Okay. Kevin, do you have?
Yeah, the other thing, I met with Donna today and planning staff, and I met with Ben briefly. The other thing, when we voted on this initially the first time, the numbers that we were given were from December 2019. You know, and that's, and, and in my opinion, far as when somebody votes on something, you know, you want to have all the facts, all the data. Me and Donna, I, I counted over eighty, low eighties, of different homes from this sheet that we were given on July 31st, that there's eighty less buildable lots just from, you know, a few weeks. I mean, that was one of the things that I think where we had discussed.
Well, so that's, that's my point, and that's why I asked about new or additional information that might have. So the applicant come forward and say, we have new information, but the information we were given was the information that was available to the county staff. staff at the time. That's a planning tool that they use. And I would venture to say, without putting words in Lori's mouth, that that tool is updated annually because the rate of growth in the past has historically not been such that it really mattered. There wasn't that much up or down movement in the county. Look at the last couple of years, we've exploded in growth. It changed the game. Now, should we have maybe looked at that sooner? Possibly, and probably so. Could we learn something from that? Absolutely. The staff has now changed how they're going to look at that. So, but at the time, when she gave that information to us, that was what was on the form at that particular moment in time. And you had some qualifiers concerning that and things of that nature, but it is what it is.
So, part of what Ben got to answer some of the questions I had for is, you know, the numbers that Lori provides, the reality are irrelevant from a school loading perspective in that we don't control the school lines. The school board does.
Right.
And so, if the school board could care, that's a flippant, I didn't mean it to come out that way. But if those numbers have no impact, or the school board, you know, is going to remain, you know, kind of locked in with houses around Moyac, go to Moyac, those around Shawboro, go to Shawboro, and we're not going to go across the inner coastal in any circumstance, then, you know, that tool is, has really lost, in my opinion, what I thought was to be, again, I've been on the board a little bit, right? My impression of that tool was always a source for the school board to look at, see what was coming, to anticipate the inevitability of needing to shift where school boundaries were, to capture and to level out. Hence, we have north of the bridge, and we have south of the bridge. And that's how we were tracking school loadings. There, and I understand residents that are by Moyac Elementary School that don't feel like, I mean, I get that, right? You want to go to the school down the street, not the one further down the street. So, I understand that. But the reality is, if there's not a flexibility in being able to move those boundaries, then that tool, to me, is, has lost a lot of what I thought its effectiveness would be.
And that's probably not the sole thing. None of us talked about the reasons we approved or denied, so.
Now, I will say, and to answer what Owens said, we normally, and we normally, if there's a motion to deny, and it fails, then that typically turns around for a motion to approve. And I've seen them where they both fail.
Yes.
Yep.
Case in point, case in point. I've also seen motions die for lack of a second, right? And so, to basically be the epitome of a politician, I can play all sides in this discussion and argument. You know, to Ike's point, there's been many cases that we didn't have a second, and it died. And I don't know that we proffered a motion to contrary in the other direction. And so, that would be our absolute concern of mine is, at what point do we open ourselves up to having to re-adjudicate any and all of those cases in the past? I mean, I move to continue the discussion on reopening the issue to continue. I don't, without knowing the impact of previous decisions, I'm a little...
Or it would be a statute of limitations on it.
Probably some, but...
You mentioned about the very ban of the 3000 program.
Oh, that's...
That's a little bit cleaner than us.
Is a procedure apply throughout. And just like the other night, when we voted on the horse tours, the first one was denied, your motion. Then I made a motion, it was denied. And then we had a third motion that approved it.
I agree.
And I've been sitting here ever since.
Well, and that's happened. That's not what's, what's, the point here is that historically, and from what I was told, from the second I was sworn in, is that if there, in the absence of a motion, it is dead. It is considered a denial. And that is how we have operated and acted on in my four years here, just shy of four years here, and what I have seen in my years of watching meetings and coming to meetings. And so, there is a way for the applicant to come forward with basically the same project. We can rehear this again if we want to. Yes, it's going to add a little bit of time, but it's not going to add a year of time. And it's not going to break from what has had been historical tradition or practice for this board and previous boards. I mean, we've had multiple back-and-forth of motions. That's fine, and retractions and trying to clean it up. But in this case, I think we'd be prudent to look to our counselor-at-law and take, and heed his advice, as we did during that meeting. We should continue to do so now because he's the one that's got to defend us, and he has a good feeling about this.
Then let me ask just a question. We just, we just did a vote for PB 2013, motion for denial. And it carried 5-1?
4-2.
4-2, excuse me, 4-2, I apologize, 4-2. To keep it clean, should we have asked for somebody to motion for approval, just so we know what the vote would have been?
No, it was moved to deny. No, it was moved to deny.
And it had a majority vote.
Oh, okay.
Right, so, yeah, it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't quite the same thing, but I get where your head was going.
Yeah, just to keep things clean, but you're right.
So, the difference is that in this case, with the application for FLORA, the property stayed in its same zoning that it always was. Just a motion to change the zoning was defeated, and it stayed the way it is. And that's basically what we've got here tonight. So...
But like Mike was kind of getting at, I mean, like you said, typically, we vote, if Selena threw out a motion to approve something, and that didn't, that didn't go, somebody else threw, I mean, like I said, I mean, typically, and I clearly haven't been as long as most of you guys, but I'm longer than a couple. But, I mean, like I said, I see, I see it both ways.
Well, but, but... We have definitely, we have definitely either approved or denied things, and didn't have a majority, and it carried for lack of whatever, and that has moved on. That, we have clearly done that. And I agree with you. The, what I can remember, and I thought the infamous School of Government is the one that said that, was that, you know, if a motion fails, then the opposite remains true? Is that even...
Not sure that's...
But I'm not sure.
But, so...
Because, and let me give you an example. A motion to deny, if it doesn't reach a majority, does not necessarily by default create a motion to approve.
Right.
Or an approval.
Right, exactly.
There's a subsequent motion to follow.
Yeah.
If there is one. In this case, there wasn't one. And that's where we get back to the historical practice that we, if it doesn't pass, and there's nothing else put forward, then it's just done. So, in this case, and in previous cases, we have held true to that. And I'm going to suggest that we do the same tonight. And I'm going to make a motion to deny the motion to renew.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
So, even if we, even if, even if the motion to deny the renewal vote goes through, the option for the applicant...
MXR.
The MXR, whatever, it could come within, within a week, two weeks, whatever.
However long it takes him to get his professional...
And doesn't have to wait a year to do this.
Right. That can be before us pretty quickly.
He still has a path, right?
Yes, he does, absolutely. Much shorter than a year.
Sorry.
For clarification, I'll look to, to the county attorney. It then has to go through the entire application process, though, correct? So, it doesn't just jump straight back to the Board of Commissioners?
But we're looking at 90...
For, right?
Correct.
We're looking at three to four months, not 12 months, and then another three months.
...first to determine whether it should be allowed through the gate.
Right.
Before a year passes.
Right. And that comes to us for that decision, based on evidence put forward by the applicant, or information put forward. In this case...
Let me ask you another question, if you don't mind, just to...
Sure, of course.
If, if we, if the board were to approve motion for renewal, then would the board be able to hear new evidence, or would we just have to vote on basically what we've heard?
No, we can...
It could be reopened again.
There is case law that you would want or need to advertise it again for public hearing, and allow for public comments to be made, just like you would any zoning matter, and then make your decision on the application upon close of that public hearing.
So, if we, if we do this, not only do we change the historical practice of this board, and what we have told to be so, then we have to come back again, do it again. And in the absence of anything, does our vote remain the same with the board members who voted the same way before? Nothing's changed at this particular moment in time, I don't think, to change anyone's opinion of how they voted. So, but, given a few months from now, we have different information. What Lori's information is, has been updated. We're going to have hopefully some applications open, or we'll be proceeding at that point with remedies for the schools to fix them, right? November is when you're hoping to put that out to bid, is that correct?
RFQ would go out in November with a, hopefully, a notice to proceed on design and construction June 21.
So, next summer, so for 2021 school year, we're into that whole process, and maybe that's a different definition for us. At that point in time, even 90 days from now, could be a different outcome for this whole thing, just based on a change in what is going on within the county.
I think, like you said, you did make the comment that there's nothing different. There is, I mean, I have to prove, I mean...
But that's not, that's not...
I'm saying that's, I mean, I'm just saying that, but there is something, far as opinions, there is something different.
Right, so, but that is something that can be brought forward to show to us. But at that moment in time, I'm talking about at that moment in time, when that decision was made, my decision was not based off of what Lori's information was. And neither was Selena's, neither was Kitty's, and I don't know what Paul's decision was based on.
No one knows.
Because no one, we didn't...
Paul doesn't know.
Right. No one proffered why they made their decision.
I have dice.
So, to hinge this on that is not appropriate at this time, mostly because we didn't have the information, and also because that's not what I made my decision off of. And that's not what Selena made her decision off of. So, if new stuff comes to light, if that changes to the better, for the client, great, or the applicant, outstanding. If the schools are getting somewhere better, and the whole thing flips the other way, then that's great. That's democracy in motion. So...
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So, we got two to four.
And Mr. Chairman, I have a recommendation.
Yes, sir.
And based on the language that Owen read from the UDO, I would request that we re-wicker that so that a motion to approve that fails, then by default, is a denial.
Or a whack.
Unless, unless another motion is made, just like a failure to obtain a second on a motion, that motion dies.
What if no motion is proffered at all, like, may I comment?
Anything that comes up for this board that isn't going to be a motion one way or the other, should never have been on the agenda in the first place, and we just take it out of bend.
Well, I'm going to ask a question about that, because the planning board, if they don't hear something within a certain timeframe, it automatically passes. And, you know, I just want to be consistent with our rules.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
I do, too. And that's where I go back to, Owen, since I've been on this board, if it got, if it got...
Right. And this is consistent.
Well, I can't help what's going on. But I know in my previous tenure, if we had a motion to approve, and it was denied, we came back with a subsequent motion to deny it.
Well, in this case, no one, no one made that motion. In the absence of a motion, what do you do?
He asked the question if we needed to make one, and nobody...
I asked the question to the county attorney.
Owen asked it, too. And nobody said nothing, so...
Right. I asked the county attorney, did we need one? He said, no. And I asked if anyone would like to make another motion, and there was, there was no takers on it. So, at any rate, so there is a way forward for FLORA to come forward as a little bit different type of subdivision, MXR, to come back for the board for further consideration, to allow that to come forward before a year's out. And the burden to meet one of the findings is not extremely difficult with new or additional information that might have affected the board's decision. So, if the applicant still wants to come forward with that, I would recommend it, and we can move on with life, and hopefully have a resolution to this in the future. And Mr. Bowman, I agree with you. We do need to probably look at our code ordinances and amend that for future use, and have that discussion at our retreat to look at that, maybe anything else we dig into, delve into, to find that could have some ambiguities to it. All right. Next item on our new business, item B, recommendation of a bid award, Willhead subdivision drainage improvements on Salfish Street. Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to do my best with this. Our county engineer was, was going to do the presentation on this, and he had to leave suddenly tonight. So, basically, what is before you tonight is a recommendation of bid award, Willhead subdivision drainage service district. There's some improvements that need to be made on Salfish Street. It is a larger pump, and installing more drainage tiles to be able to draw that water down faster. The bids came in, the bid amount, the low bidder was Hatchell Concrete Incorporated with an amount of $362,235.30. We will be able to cash this project out of the savings of that service district, and still maintain a good enough fund balance to make us comfortable recommending moving forward. So, at this point in time, I just need a motion to award that bid.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you. Consideration of an EMS request to allow for billing of non-emergency transport in Kirtuck House, Moyac, and Kirtuck Health and Rehab Center, Barco.
And for this, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn it over to our fire and EMS chief.
Oh, Chief Milton.
Chief Milton's going to come up and talk about, this is actually something that came through the FIAB and was recommended approval. With that, I'll turn it over to him to explain a little more.
All right. Start off with a brief overview of how we do EMS billing in Kirtuck County. When a Kirtuck ambulance transports a patient to the hospital, the patient's insurance company receives a bill from our EMS billing company. We do what we call soft billing. They don't go after the patient and go against their credit, or, you know, go into collections or anything such as that. And that's the way we've done it forever, I think. We have two facilities in Kirtuck County. We have, there's an assisted living facility, the Kirtuck House in Moyac, and then there's Kirtuck Rehab in Barco. One of these facilities, the Kirtuck House Assisted Living Center, has started making a lot of 911 calls, which shouldn't be 911 calls. They're actually not emergent calls, things that are, you wouldn't call 911 for. But they're calling us because we're, we come quickly, and we're, we get there, we take the patient to the hospital, or if they want to get a patient out of there, we do that. And those, it has gotten out of hand to the point where it's going to hasten the need for, it's going to prematurely hasten the need for an additional medic unit in the Moyac area. That's our busiest EMS district now. We know that moving forward, when we need to add a medic unit resource on the mainland, that's where it's going to, that's where it's going to be needed. But they're calling so much, sometimes three or four times a day, for non-emergency matters, tying up our ambulances. We only have two ambulances between the Cornstalk Bridge and the state line, and they tie them up, and so there's two problems.
How long is the round trip?
The round trip is generally to Chesapeake, so it's about 90 minutes, at best, at best.
I'm taking, you have had a conversation with them about dialing 911?
We have. And when we do that historically, it'll improve for a while, and then it'll go back again. They'll change, change management, which they do every couple of years, it seems like, and the staff changes, and there'll be a, the official resurface.
So, what are some of the non-urine calls that we are providing to transport?
Things such as dry skin. There are a lot of our reports April has there that they don't, the patient doesn't have a chief complaint. The staff calls to move the patient. The patient is, has no complaint.
I heard one the other...
They're not in any distress. They, they don't have any...
I heard one the other day on the radio. They said the patient wasn't feeling well. And they, and y'all responded? I mean, I was like...
So, I pulled them today. No complaints or injury. Stitches were reopened. Tube displaced to include urinary or gastric. Hit pain following surgery. Altered mental status times two days, and they were COVID positive. Malaise, just don't feel well. And that was in an Alzheimer's patient. Weakness, that was in a dementia patient. And pain was what we were dispatched to, and upon our arrival, the patient denied that. Two areas of concern with this are... Two areas of concern with this are, one, we are a 911 agency. That's what we're allowed to function as. So when we take a patient that does not have a qualifying medical emergency, there's no payment to the county at all, whether the insurance is paying it or whoever, that, that claim is going to be denied. If you're taking them for stitches that reopen, that's not an emergency. The claim is going to be denied. If you're taking them for a tube that needs to be replaced, that claim is going to be denied.
You can't even tell for non-emergency.
The second problem, so they're not meeting the reimbursement criteria. The second problem is the non-emergent transport, which we've discussed with them. There is an agency in the county, operating in the county, which they stated they have used. What'd you say the name of that is? Ahoski?
Ahoski Ambulance Service.
I spoke to North Carolina OEMS and in order for them to practice in our county, if they are housed in our county, that requires them to fall under our administrative and medical oversight, which they currently are not. And that would require that we review their protocols, evaluate their certification and what they're doing, how they're treating patients. And we would have to revise our system plan and have our operational medical director sign off. So as he stated, we've met with them several times. It changes for a period of time and then it goes back to it, the same kind of calls. As an example, in the month of September, it was almost fifty percent of the calls that Medic Three is running is to the Keratuck House. They had, stand by, exactly. They had, in September, they had eighty-five total calls and forty-three of them were to the Keratuck House.
And how many of them were, I know, I remember somebody got hurt kind of bad in September. Like forty of those forty-three were non-emergent.
Most of them are non-emergent.
Yeah, I remember there was one or two when I was working.
And insurance pays for them.
No, I get it. So, so you're just asking to bill these guys for these non-emergency calls?
He wants to build the Keratuck House.
Yes, right, right, right.
And that, and that would be a departure from anything we've done before.
And is that a ordinance change for us or something? What's that?
It would, it would need to be a, so first of all, we're coming to you to see if, for consideration, see if this is a policy change the board wants to make. If it is, the fee schedule would need to change. And we would need to reach out to Office of EMS and make sure that we have the ability to have a fee that would allow us to do that. I believe we can, we might have to go through some paperwork to make that happen, but.
Would this justify Keratuck House or the other rehab?
It has to be. To be consistent, those are the only two facilities that are in the county that we transport patients out of. So to be consistent, we're including them both. The rehab center has not been a problem.
And to be fair, Centerra is a skilled nursing facility and the Keratuck House is an assisted living facility. They are, they are not, they don't have nursing stations.
Do they have a protocol in place of who can place the call to, to 911? Or is it just any staff member?
They have recently acquired a nurse practitioner and it is our understanding at our last meeting that it is the nurse practitioner who makes the determination as to whether we are called or not. However, she also oversees five of these agencies and I can't remember where the furthest one out is. But geographically, she is challenged.
So she does it by internet?
She's, she's not physically on site, no.
Well, they, I mean, I know the resident, I mean, we've had residents call multiple time. You know, they got phones in their room, they dial 911. I mean, we, because y'all, the EMS, the EMSs, we've responded as well to assist them. We don't go to Barco, I'll tell you that.
What about our general population out here?
They have a bed capacity of ninety beds right now.
I mean, what if, if, if somebody down the street just calls up 911 and says, I'm sick. I need, they come out there and then they want, they, they, they said, look, I need to go to the hospital. Will y'all take them there?
If they are medically competent, we leave.
Okay, and then, but if it's not a medical emergency, okay, because, because you can't bill for that either then.
Correct.
We don't refuse transportation. Our concern is that they're overloading the system.
Well, how many calls do we get throughout the county that are, I got a stomach ache. I can't use the restroom, I, I just don't feel good. And our ambulance are rolling for those calls, quite a bit of them, what I've heard. But I've heard it was quite a bit.
I don't have exact numbers for you, but it would be less, in my opinion, it would be less than what we're running at the Keratuck House.
Okay. It is, but I mean, but my, but, but feedback I've heard is we're still getting, not to get off subject, but our ambulance are getting tied up a lot with just general six calls too.
And that's a fact of life in EMS.
Yeah. But we can, but, but others.
The other thing that made me, that made me contribute toward is, in a world of COVID, people think of dying, right? And, and so I don't feel good.
Translates to I got COVID, right.
Therefore I must be, anyways.
I'm going to put my health professionals at risk.
It's been going on at the, and I'm, and I'm not picking on facilities. It's been going on at the Moyac one because I'm like, is there a call for that? But like she said, eighty-five calls, ambulance calls in the month of September. Forty-three of them were there.
And the other thing that, I don't know if it's time of day, the problem is it's normally during normal hours, right? This isn't like around the clock calls. So during some of the busiest lives.
Yeah, they're taking, taking somebody with a skin rash.
And that happens a lot.
And I'm guessing this facility has no way to transport anyone.
Not themselves directly.
Owen hasn't got all his permits yet for what he's working on.
I know I came by there. I think it was this morning, an ambulance came out from, I assume back then, back to the station.
Right.
So do you need a, a motion from us or just a head nod on?
Kind of a head nod, that'll get us, that'll get, you know, like I said, it's a FIAB recommendation.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
All right.
That's enough.
Got enough. We got a super majority.
What we will do is we will make sure that we've got the proper approval from Office of EMS to do the non-emergent. And then we will also bring up fee schedule change to you all sometime in the next month or two, probably the next month.
All right, thanks for coming out this evening, folks, and hanging with us. Next item is board appointments, the game commission. Leanne, on these reappointments, it says first for, like for me, for Ardell Waterfield, first, first full term expires June twenty, June one of 2022. Was he on a partial fill-in?
He filled an unexpired term.
Thought it, that's what it was, okay. Well, can we do these as a slate soon? Okay, I'm going to move to reappoint Ardell Waterfield.
I'm going to move to reappoint.
I'll move to reappoint Jason Delangia.
Jeremy Evans.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up is consent agenda. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that?
Move for approval.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.